Could this secretary perform the roll call attendance, please? I should have received the minutes from the secretary regarding the... There's no discussion. Okay, motions made in the second, all in favor? Our first item on the agenda for CarMax subdivision. Take a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
So moved.
Second. The request, they're asking to be adjourned. I think they're still working on some open-ended items. Anybody has any comments regarding? Okay, seeing there's none. Second, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Next agenda is adjourned public hearing for Jiffy Woo. All in favor? This one reached out to the secretary and is asking. Amendment to July the 8th. Is there anybody from the public that has any comments regarding the? None? Make that. Public hearing to July 8th. All in favor? Opposed, so none, motion carries. Okay. This brings us to. For CarMax.
Good evening. I'm delighted to hear that two, there were two public hearings. In any event, my name's Richard O'Rourke, and I am the attorney for the applicant. Here tonight. Development consultant with. Colorado. Project manager for CarMax. Also with us is Karen, our professional engineer is with Bowler Engineering. Promess Air, who is a. Innovations. Also at the state. And third and fourth year lighting design. And also with. Comes from Virginia, who's with Cadence Architecture, and he's an architect and a certified. We note that we did receive a. CPL.
There was a communication failure on our end. I didn't.
We'd like to cover some of the things that we thought we adjusted in light of the discussions we've had in the past. And what I'd like to do is start with our lighting design consultant who's coming to us. Review of his review of the lighting and his background, which I think will be very helpful in terms of the next iteration that we hope to be developing in terms of lighting, which we know is a very important component to the review that we're ongoing. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the forum, perhaps give them a couple of minutes, he can explain his background and talk about where we're headed with this. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for your time, appreciate it. I'm a professional lighting designer.
Just say your name for the record and your firm, please.
Sure, my name is Paul Mercier. I am a partner in lighting design innovations out of Batavia, New York.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So I'm a professional lighting designer, I have a master's degree in lighting and physics. I'm the past president of the Illuminating Engineering Society. I served on the board of directors when model lighting ordinance was created between the Illuminating Engineering Society and the International Dark Sky Association in 2006. I'm also a winner of the Royal Astronomical Society Award for lighting design of car dealership. I have an approach whenever I do a lighting project, and the first thing that I'm doing is I look to see who the neighbors are in the site that we actually work in. I think it's one of the most important things that if you're going to be in a particular space, that you have to make sure that you're concerned about the other people that occupy neighboring spaces. The other thing is I, what's very important to me personally is night sky. I believe we need to control the night sky, so I was really happy to see that you have a lighting ordinance in place, that you just recently adopted it. I think that is a worthwhile, a worthwhile undertaking. I also believe highly in the environment and energy conscious, being energy conscious. So one of the nice things about doing lighting design is you have multiple options at your disposal in order to be able to reduce the actual impact of energy from lighting. The other part is the business community. I mean, we're here today because we have a client, and I believe that you have a client that is looking to try and create a development to better the community. So I have a, I'd like to discuss lighting ordinances in general, if you don't mind, because yours is fairly new, and I reviewed it, and I just wanted to tell you what other ordinances are available to you. They're starting points to all communities, as far as I'm concerned. There's, it identifies really the concerns of the community, and yours does exactly that. It states what it is that you're trying to achieve with control of the lighting. Normally, there's two paths to demonstrate compliance. One is a prescriptive method, and the prescriptive method is a checklist, which is similar to what you have, which says you need to do this, 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 and this. And normally, that's used for organizations that don't engage professionals to help them. The other way of being able to go through that process is to actually have a performance review. This is all part of the model lighting ordinance that was created by both parties. And that performance review, its goals are to actually meet or exceed what your expectations are from your lighting ordinance. And most of the time, I would say with, with the ability to have some flexibility in design, you can actually reduce the outcome even further than, than what you have with a prescriptive method. Get a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So most building codes today and ordinances have both paths to compliance. There are organizations such as yours that have identified one, but I'm here to, to help CarMax try to, to modify their plan that they had submitted quite some time ago, and to try and be able to have them put together a successful lighting design that meets your needs as well as their needs. So what was their approach to, to doing that? They essentially approached us and said, can you help us down this path, because we're not really sure how to move forward in order to meet their conditions? So we were, we were engaged, we reviewed your lighting ordinance, we evaluated their exterior preliminary plan. Our goal was to align the design with the community lighting objectives. That's how we started, trying to work honestly with your priorities as opposed to CarMax's priorities as a beginning. So we wanted to realize lighting outcomes that actually exceed the ordinance expectations, and to achieve their business objectives. Now, the reason for achieving their business objectives is essentially that's why they're here. They want to establish a business, and they have criteria required for them to be able to operate. So the lighting objectives that we've identified, and I think these are important for everybody to understand, is that they have a high security area due to the type of business that they have. So both for the people that are visiting the site, the people that work on the site, it's important that the lighting provides them with a secure space. So the other aspect that we're, that we look at is the protection of, of their functionality. So to be able to allow them to actually create a business that can be successful. So I think that's important as well. So we've provided them with some modifications to what you have received. And I'm here today without documentation, but to give you an idea of what it is that we're going to be moving forward with, these are proposals that I put together. So we've optimized the light fixture arrangements on the site. And that was to reduce light trespass. And I'm going to use some terms that are in your code, if you want to ask me questions about what definitions of those are, feel free to do so. I'm assuming that it's your code, so you understand what it is. Essentially, the light trespass is making sure that you're good to your neighbors. The other aspect that we, we look at is to maintain uniformity on the site. So lighting uniformity is not addressed in your, in your code, but essentially what it means is trying to eliminate dark spots in the space. So that if you look at, at the entire site as a whole, if you have bright areas and, and dark areas, those create environments for people to possibly cause issues on the site. So the other aspect of it is that we have a co-locate issue. And what I mean by that is that our lighting poles have security cameras on them, and in order for those security cameras to work with the lighting poles, we have to make sure that our, our space is evenly illuminated, lit to a particular level for security purposes. And that's a bit of a challenge for us that we've undergone the study of. There are some things that we've agreed with right away that makes sense. We've analyzed the color temperature that you're requesting. Most car dealerships throughout North America, and we've worked pretty much with every large car dealership that exists, from probably some that you've seen recently, to some that maybe you haven't seen. Almost all of them are looking for 5,000 Kelvin. So 5,000 Kelvin is a blue-white light, and I'm sure you're aware of that. You are asking for 3,000 Kelvin. I have an idea of why you're asking for that, but without asking you to present that, we've really looked at that, and I've given them a good reason to, to either go down to that 3,000 Kelvin, or something that we can agree to together. So we want to reduce light output below the code requirement for high-security average for candles. That's our goal. We want to make sure that the space is secure, and that we meet your, your requirement for that. The other thing that we're looking at is the property line. So our property line has a couple of roads on it, where the roads are actually lit more than the property is, and those, the lights that are on the road actually throw light back onto the property presently. So, and there's not many poles, so I'm not saying that there's a lot of them, but there are some poles with lights that are on the roadway that have light fixtures that throw backwards. So in your, in your ordinance, you talk about the idea of a bug rating to evaluate a light fixture. I was, I was quite impressed with that. The rest of the prescriptive method looks like it was developed really from a dark sky format that was previous to the model lighting ordinance being available in 2006. And what I mean by that is it's quite prescriptive, and it is really looking at the, the concept of trying to reduce illumination to the lowest possible level, even if it actually causes more light pollution. So what we're looking at is to try and be able to reduce glare with the poles, and so we're thinking about adding some louvers to those, so that the visual issue that you get with a pole that has glare, it's not the amount of light that's actually on the property or the pole height, it's actually the glare coming off the light fixture. So we've actually looked at including louvers that cut off the light close to where the pole is, but also a visual, it's the brightness of the light fixture that causes the most glare for, for illumination for the people that are surrounding the area. So those are a small amount of the changes that we're looking at making from the original submission. I have experience throughout North America on, on sites from national parks. One of our present projects is actually in the New York State Niagara Falls Park, where they also have lighting issues because of the condition we're doing in Niagara Falls Visitor Center is one of our, one of our projects. We've worked in New York State quite a bit for generally exterior illumination and lighting. So with what I've presented today, I know it's a lot of information, very quickly, if you have questions, or even if you have questions later on, I'm, I'm open to working with you. My goal is to work with a planning board as a team to develop something that hopefully meets and exceeds their expectations. Thank you.
Just a couple of notes, I mean, so obviously, so I mean, it sounds like you, what's in the code, you guys are looking to, to change. You don't want to stick with what our code says. And it, I'm just trying to, you know, the reasoning behind that. You know, one of your comments, which I just, if you could expand on, is that the lower lighting, lower lighting levels will create more light pollution?
No, so, so that's a really good.
That's kind of what I was, is kind of what it sounded like you're referring to, which doesn't make sense.
I'll clarify that.
Into a, into a, you know, for layman's terms, I mean.
So I'll, I'll explain what I meant. It wasn't the lower light levels, it's actually the lower mounting heights. So light fixtures have a distribution of light that is in a cone, right? The closer, so the most light pollution is actually from light that is reflected off of the surface. It's actually not from the light source any longer. The types of light fixtures that we're looking at using are light fixtures that don't throw light up into the sky, and the only light that you get from the light source actually is the one that's reflected off of the surface. The closer you are to the surface, the more the light bounces into the night sky.
So in theory, if you put a higher intensity light over the top of shiny cars and glass, that will reflect more light back into the atmosphere?
If it's a, if it's a lower pole height, correct.
But if it's higher up, you're saying it won't?
And the reason why is the further I get away from the reflective surface, the less the light actually will go up and will reflect off of the surface, up into the sky.
Okay.
All right, I have two questions.
You have a question, go ahead.
You said that you were looking forward to working on your plans that we reviewed. Are you saying that you had not contributed to this plan until May 13th, that you would be working on the next draft, or was this you, this May 13th?
That's a good question. I was not engaged prior to.
Until now, yeah.
Until recently, approximately a month ago.
Okay, so with an extra vision, we can expect to see your contribution? Do you have a business card to manage?
I don't. I haven't had a business card in about 10 years. We're very environmentally conscious, and frankly, with internet, people can find me quite easily, so my apologies for.
No worries, just remind me of your name again.
It's Paul Mercier.
Well, he made his suggestion.
Sure.
A lot of people don't have business cards anymore, but that's okay. I have his resume.
That would be one.
And so what I want to do, I want to make sure it's part of the next mission. I have his resume, which I think spans the cones back.
Thank you. This is what I was going to use your business card to find, so.
My business partner told me I should make prints before I came, and luckily for me, Rick was ahead of me.
Well, Rick's a lawyer, and lawyers don't go anywhere without cards.
Did you have any?
No, that's, I mean, that's good to hear. Obviously, the code is very prescriptive with the ability for a waiver, should we see the design that exceeds the prescriptions of the code. So without knowing what you will provide in the future, I look forward to it.
Yeah, this is really to give you just an idea of kind of where we're going, and that, that you actually have a plan in front of you that we're, we're making better. We're in, we're in process of being able to do that. We're making modifications on a regular basis, and we're, we're almost finished with our studies. Any other questions?
Anybody else have any questions?
No, sounds like he's working on what we want.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Just actually, one question regarding the 5,000 Kelvin issue with respect. Is that a function of car dealerships? I mean, you mentioned that car dealerships prefer the 5,000 versus, you know, some other line, is that?
That's a great question. So we have been changing color temperatures an awful lot recently. The reason why car dealerships actually use 5,000 Kelvins is twofold. One is it shows the product really well. The other reason is because previous to the past four or five years, 5,000 Kelvin light sources were much more efficient. So you could actually reduce your energy consumption by going to that. Today, and there's still a premium, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say that they're both efficient. The, a blue-white light is going to, it's a visual science aspect of it, that that blue-white light is actually going to, because an LED, a blue LED is much more efficient than a warmer colored LED, so 3,000 Kelvin. So we're talking, but what we're really talking about is, is the look of the light source. So correlated color temperature, and tell me if I'm going beyond what you're interested in.
No, I, I know about color temperature from a prior life.
So the correlated color temperature, though, is only what the color of the light source looks like. It actually doesn't tell you anything about the way. The spectral power distribution of the light, light source has to be evaluated separate from the correlated color temperature. So you can have a really lousy 3,000 Kelvin light source, or you can have a really lousy 3,000, 5,000 Kelvin light source. It's just color temperature, let's put that as.
Good evening, my name is John Thatcher, the CenterPoint Integrated Solutions Development Consultant for CarMax. Good to see you all again. Appreciate you having us here tonight. As Paul mentioned, the lighting plan currently in front of you was created before he came on board. We were working as fast as we could to, to get a new plan in front of you ahead of this meeting. It's not quite there yet, but we will have that available and submitted and, and ready to discuss for our, our next meeting with you all. And, and as Paul mentioned, you know, we're, we're working towards the intent of the code as much as possible, and I think we are getting close to a design that will make all of you happy and, and satisfy CarMax's business needs at the same time. So we look forward to, to getting that in front of you. I just wanted to touch on a few other items that were discussed, at least high-level, last meeting. The first one being the parking counts for the public parking field on the proposed project. So the initial round of, of comments we received indicated that the parking provided in the customer-employee parking area exceeded the maximum requirements of the code. And at the last meeting, I think I had discussed how the amount of public parking shown was, you know, based on modeling from CarMax's, you know, 230-plus existing facilities across the country, and, you know, meaning they have lots of data points to model out their new stores, and, and how much they need for public parking, sales display spaces, staging area spaces, all the aspects that go into site design. So to take this a step further from, from last meeting, we did run some analysis on existing CarMax facilities, just to, just to make, to check ourselves and to provide some additional information to you all. And what we found was that for facilities with the exact same prototype as what is being proposed here in Wappinger, with the same or greater sales estimates with similar demographics, which is what drives those, those estimates, the average parking space, public parking space count was 111 spaces, and for this particular site in front of you, we're proposing 77. So we are actually on the lower end of what would be typical for a comparable store in the existing CarMax network. Of course, you know, CarMax would like to have beyond that, but we, we've pared that down to the, what we feel is the minimum reasonable number for, for CarMax based on the data they have, and we've, we've settled on that 77 spaces. So yeah, actually proposing less than is typical for a store of this size. You know, as I mentioned previously, I think CarMax has a good track record of right sizing these public parking lots. They don't want to overpark and, and create more unnecessary paving, you know, and the expense that comes with that. But they also don't want to underbuild and, and have congestion issues or, or folks parking on the road, anything like that. So to wrap it up, you know, they, they've got the data to support the, the number of spaces shown, and, you know, the concern is that any less would, would cause congestion issues. And with our next dismissal, we're happy to provide the data, not necessarily the sales estimate data, but, but the, the other demographic and, and store size data that we, we used to come to that conclusion. And so with that, we would, we will be requesting a waiver to that requirement as well. A few other things to touch on very quickly. Landscaping, so as requested at the, with the previous round of comments, at the previous meeting we had with you all, we did install, or propose to install additional landscaping on Osborne Hill Road. We, we enhanced that once, we've enhanced it again to add lower-height vegetation along Osborne Hill Road to sort of fill in the gaps where they exist in the existing mature landscaping there. If you all are familiar with the area, there are some, some large evergreens that are, that are, that form a fairly good natural barrier that's already in place, and we're proposing to kind of fill in the lower levels of that with some lower-growing vegetation. So we have enhanced it in that way, we've added additional trees around the water tank area to help screen that as well. There was a comment about large vehicle access with our latest dismissal, which I understand you all haven't had a chance to review in great detail yet, but we have provided an auto-turn plan showing how the car carriers and how emergency vehicles are able to navigate the site, and, and that has been accounted for with the design we have.
We took a little bit of that inset before the meeting. The only modification, I think we're also looking for, you know, the circulation around the building. That inset shows access in the, the public parking area. They're going to want access to all, all of the available walls in the building, right? Not all four, but certainly where there are routes to, to get that fire truck in.
We will have that updated.
Yeah, I think the turning was only shown in the delivery area only.
Right, okay. We can provide that. I know that is something we always look at to make sure the emergency access is available throughout.
They can get to wherever they need to on the property, you know, to get, you know, if they need to get to the opposite side of the building, that there's, you know, sufficient access for a fire truck to get there.
All right, we will. All right, we will include that with our next.
We also need to discuss breaking up the front of that building a little bit, right?
Do you want to do something with the, with the architecture?
Yes.
It would just look like a giant block.
I don't want to take up too much of your night. I do have Brian Maslik here to speak on the architecture. I'll let him say a few words and then you can ask him any questions you have on that front. If there's anything, you have questions on the topics I covered, I'm happy to answer it now or, or later.
Well, while we get the, well, you're handling all the engineering issues, I guess, I'm the.
It's a group effort.
It's a group effort, okay.
I see from your comment response, you're also pursuing the, the three curb cuts. The two into the public parking space and then the one into the.
Oh, the three driveouts?
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so I, I, that's, I guess, can you get, what was it? It was the Duchess County.
County Highway, right? Uh, Smithtown?
Duchess County DPW felt that there was an excessive number of cuts.
Is that?
Right?
Was it, I thought it was the Duchess County Department of Planing, but it was all.
Is that, that's a good question, is that?
I think it's the County.
I believe that's.
Osborne Hill. No, Osborne Hill is, I don't think Smithtown really is.
Extension is not the county?
Town Road, I believe.
Okay.
But then, I don't, you know, and then you've got the issues for jurisdiction in from the intersection, so.
Yeah.
Karen Maginowski, Boulder Engineering. We've started discussions with DOT as it relates to the Route 9 section that's there. Mainly, what we'll deal with, with them is drainage. That's where our drainage ultimately goes. That intersection is the low point. So we, we will be reducing the rate of flow that goes there and we are working with them on that as we progress the stormwater design. Smithtown Road, we can work with Town Highway on reviewing that as well. I know it was commented on previously. Obviously Osborne Hill, there's, there's no access that's there. The site as it exists today has four accesses, so we are reducing that to three. So there is less that's there. There's three along Osborne Hill today, plus a curb cut coming off of Route 9, which we are closing. So I think we are improving that.
I think all three of the ones on Osborne were created immediately.
On Smithtown?
On Osborne. Any, any curb cut on Osborne is not.
There's no site plan.
We weren't, yeah, we weren't involved in that, so. But yeah, with that, we're happy to review with, with the Highway Agency on those other curb cuts.
And just to speak to the, the operations side of things and why there are three proposed, the.
Can you zoom in on the, the area you're talking about?
Sure.
Unless it just crashes every. So I only see one there, can you point to the second one?
Oh, the, for existing drives?
Is this exist?
No, no, this is the, this is the proposed future condition.
Yeah, the, the, the two, I guess, the two into the customer employee parking lot is what I'm curious about. I only see one.
Oh.
Maybe it's been a little by the trees, there's one here, one here.
There's one there.
And one here.
Yeah. This one's closest to Route 9, leads directly into the sales display area. Yeah, that's the separated area that's just for the display of inventory for sale, not open to the public. It's surrounded by low bar rail with a gate for access in an hour. It's really kind of CarMax's outdoor showroom, if you will, of parking lot. That, this drive, we both agree that is intended to function as a test drive, test drive. Except exclusively. You can also have an OX5 on it, provide emergency access into that sales display area as well. Since it is a secure area, but that would be from a business standpoint, used exclusively to test drive. The other two lead into the public parking lot, these two here. And, and the reasoning behind that is just to provide proper flow through the, through the public parking area. The intent, to some extent, would be to have this one act, you know, kind of primarily as the customer entrance, because the customer's inner building, the prospect of pressure is here, so, you know, please, this is, this is the majority of the spaces that will fill up, you know, first, and that's, that's where people park and enter this area of the building. This driveway, the carrier loading zones, which we had one, we have, command that to two loading zones that we all request. That, the trucks will be able to come in, do that, move, park in the low, and head back out, that second drive. And so it allows those to. The, the kind of customer experience and the, the operations side of getting vehicles on and off the site to be a little more separated, so you don't have those heavy trucks driving through the customer traffic as much.
Because my only worry about that is that the customer, they're stopping me from pulling into either of these.
No, there's not.
It's just a secondary, and then you've got three curb cuts in a row, one of them being used less often than others, but. If I had to further board, and ultimately it will be.
Well, if it's a town, if it's a town, it's the town, it's the highway superintendent's purview.
Yeah. And, and if desired, we have no objection to some sort of directional signage, you saying, you know, trucks only, something for that second drive. Yeah.
I, I think it would be easier to close one, the, the second of the two, and then have that directional signage saying, you know, customer parking over here, employee parking over here, but. It's not something we need to decide now, we're coming back with another plan, but I just know that it was, it was something that the County Planning Department could have done, and it was something that caught my eye as well. It's just very close to that.
Mike hasn't weighed in on this yet, has he? Mike Sheehan? He hasn't. I don't think he, I don't think he has at this point. That's why I don't, I don't remember anything being brought in the past.
He keeps your way in on this.
Yeah.
The county and I keep talking about it, but it's just real.
Okay, so that'll be.
Unexisting, it looks like there's two.
Highway superintendent.
In front of the building.
We'll have a final say on, on the number of, you know, number of cuts into the, you know, off the road onto the property.
Sure. We're, we're, yeah, happy to have that conversation with, with him once we have his comments.
At some point.
This one here, and that one's fairly close.
The town, you know, probably set up a meeting regarding that. Yeah, I'll, I'll. You'll handle it, you'll take care of it.
I'll contact Mike and, and set up a time when we can go out and take a look.
Okay. Sure.
Okay. And now I'd like to invite Brian Maslik up to discuss the architecture.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Brian Maslik. I am with Cadence Architecture. The reason I'm here is I'm, was formerly with CarMax for eight years, and I was a new store site design manager. I'm currently an independent consultant specializing in new store site design specifically for CarMax. We're doing about 30 properties with them at this moment, so heavily engaged in this program. Real quickly, just to add a comment, you know, CarMax operates 230 stores nationwide, and so one of the main reasons we lay out the sites the way we do is to try to avoid those conflicts between carriers and pedestrians. So we will certainly look forward to hearing the engineers' comments, but that, that's the way, that's the reasoning behind why it's laid out the way it is. So, give me a second, I'm forward. Here. I'm gonna briefly talk about building architecture, but while I'm talking about it, we have brought some images from stores that are operational at the moment that are this exact building prototype. I know that at this moment, all you have seen is two dimensional renderings, and honestly, the building doesn't look great in a two dimensional rendering. It does look better in, in three, in real life photos.
That's, that's still. These are renderings of this specific site, but you will go to the real life examples.
As we talk through the architecture, and then we can come back to the ones that are specific to this site. So, so that's a good one, let's go back. So we are not envisioning palm trees in Wappinger. This is from a store in Royal Palm Beach. Let me quickly talk about the architecture. So this is an approximately 8,500 square foot L-shaped masonry building. It is articulated on the two public facing facades by the tower or peaks, as CarMax likes to call them. These towers are composed, as you can see, of white synthetic stucco structural forms with blue metal accents. So you can see the blue banding where the signage is, and then you can see the blue metal roof. The purpose of these towers is multi.
Is that the same layout as this?
Excuse me?
Is that the same layout as what we're looking at?
It is.
It is. Yeah. This is where real pictures help a lot. So the purpose of the towers serve multi, multiple functions. One, they generate a lot of visual interest to the facade by the introduction of light and shadow. Secondly, they serve as wayfinding elements. As I said, one of them, this particular one that is on the screen, is facing the customer employee lot, and it signifies the main entrance to the building. The second one faces the sales display area. It's slightly larger than the one facing the customer lot, simply because usually the proximity to the, the major road, in this case Route 9, it's a little bit further, so it has a little bit more mass to make that connection to vehicle traffic. And then finally, the, the peaks generate a lot of brand recognition through the use of CarMax corporate colors and signage. So the masonry portion of the building, as you can see, is painted in neutral warm tones, light tone, light tan and dark tan banding that was developed to help give the building some scale. The, the banding is further reinforced in, by the fact that it is either split face, the dark tan is split face block, the light tan is smooth face block, to help break it up and give it a textural response to the facade. And then finally, as you can see, the masonry is broken up by large expanses of storefront window systems. There are silver anodized aluminum with a blue tinted glass. And then finally, on top, there is a low slope roof that's hidden behind parapet walls, and then all of the mechanical equipment is screened by metal mechanical equipment That was quick.
Okay. The, the metal screens are just the basic, you know, around the equipment, just that basic.
Yep.
Stuff that's kind of like bolted onto the equipment.
Well, bolted onto the roof and the equipments, because the equipment's in multiple locations, but it's a, it's a simple square.
Yeah, it's two different types, but most of the stuff now they're trying to do is to actually attach it to the equipment or to the, to the curve that the equipment's mounted on.
Yeah, these are bigger.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, but that will show along the top.
You will see the screening.
Yeah.
That's what you'd be seeing, like, from Route 9.
Right, you'd see the screening.
That's the, yeah, this moment.
That's the exact building that, that we were proposing at this moment. So we, we're definitely open to conversation.
But as Brian said, you know, we've, we've only shown you the architectural elevations, it's a straight on shot, you don't get a really good sense of the articulation and things like that. I think in real life, it is a, in our opinion, a, a building, and so we just wanted to bring real life examples so you can see that as well.
I know we did have some discussion regarding just the look itself. I guess we're looking for maybe something a little bit.
Breaking up what you would see from Smithtown Road.
Yeah.
Take it that big.
We'll go back to see that.
If you look at, we're looking at the, the plan that, that was submitted with the, the May 25th submission, it was a colored elevations. And the Smithtown Road elevation is kind of, is I believe the longer side, is probably the longest elevation.
Yeah.
That's visible.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, I think there was discussion, just because that end just kind of looks like, it's just the wall. I mean, you have the, you have the feature, you have your architectural feature at the door, you know, with the, with the roof, you know, the roof and the columns, you know, identifying the door, but the, from the rest of the way over to the west, it's nothing, you know, there's nothing there other than concrete, you know, it's just, you know, the banding that you explained with the colors. You're looking for a little something, well, something more, you know, appealing, something that was gonna blend in with the area. You know, even something with some more, you know, maybe some type of, you know, false, you know, gables or something on the end.
And we could, we could definitely look at, and we have done that in the past, we could also look at enhancing some landscaping up against that facade so that you get that play of light and shadow on the building, whichever you'd feel more comfortable in.
Well, you could look at, like, the building right across the street from that, the little CPA office, I mean, it's an attractive building. Tractor Supply right next door, Adams, you know, they, they all broke up those big elevations with, you know, all kinds of stuff, you know, arches and, and little false awnings or whatnot.
So, so this, this real life example, it's kind of this, this expansive.
Yeah, just kind of looks, yeah.
And you can't even see the whole from there. Yeah, from that, that angle, you can't see it.
And according to our comprehensive plan, our job is to keep the, the, everything, all the facades looking uniform in the town. You know, so that's our job, is just to make sure that everything kind of looks uniform. You don't want to have one stand out or different buildings looking like different, you know, like one of these things is not like the other.
Yeah.
You want to have consistent architectural facades up and down, Route 9 and in town. So that's all we're looking for.
I guess the one thing you want to avoid in doing that is competing with the wayfinding that the two candidates are serving as, right? So you want to do something with the rest of that building that is not going to conflict with branding and not going to conflict with wayfinding, but just something to break that up a little bit, because otherwise it's just, you know, past service entrance, it's just the.
Big brick wall.
The wall. And then an extra sign, which we will also need to talk to you about.
We will, we'll definitely look at that and come back.
Understood, yeah, if that's, if that's the main concern, I think.
Mm-hmm.
We can, well, with something that, right, a little more.
I mean, it was all there in the, the parking lot. I mean, I think that a lot could be done with enhancing landscaping there, right? It's not stretching back Osborne Hill, it's all in front of the parking lot, but some combination of landscaping and then some accent work would go a long way to break up that brick wall.
I think by some type of, you know, architectural feature somewhere.
Something to feature.
Somewhere in that area.
Elsewhere.
And I'll, I'll agree with, with the, with the planner, yes, you know, some landscape, you know, would help, you know, to either side of that feature. Yeah, just to buffer it, I mean, yeah. I don't, I don't think the block wall really provides much branding for you. Yeah. I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody says, oh, yeah, that's the, you know, that's the block wall I'm looking for. Yeah. It's, you know, they want to see, you know, they're, they're gonna see it with your, you know, with the two arches you have at the, at the entranceways, that obviously identifying the entrances to the building, but, you know, something else to break the rest of it up. I think that the board would be very happy, you know, with something there.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
Understood.
Okay.
Anybody, anything else, or?
Silence.
Fine, just one last.
If I may, just one last thing, and that's from John's letter. He mentioned, of course, and we, as you know, the last time we were here, we sit in terms of participation for water and sewer on an equitable, fair basis where, where they're, we're prepared to cooperate, collaborate with the town. I note that apparently there have been some estimates of what the entire project would cost, and I'm wondering whether, so we can get a handle around what it is that you're looking for in terms of the service area that would be included in the potential special district or whatever. And obviously Carmax would like to know, they're going to participate, but if you have any idea, ballpark estimates of what, what we're looking at and how many properties are involved would be helpful.
Yeah, that's-
That's for the town?
It's an awkward, yeah, it's, I had the discussion earlier, I, I read the memo from the engineer a few nights ago, and I saw that, I didn't think about it until just a few minutes before we started the meeting. And I brought that up, because technically, that's not our purview to get involved with the water and sewer aspect, that's a town board issue. I think that that's something that needs to be discussed at another level, and I'm going to defer it to the town attorney, to let him address that, and as long as there's some agreement, you know, we'll look for a lead from a different level on that particular comment, but it doesn't directly, you know, affect us, but we, we would like you to have that conversation with the, with the town board and the town attorney-
Sure.
-to come up to some agreement there.
And I know the, you know, the applicant had, you know, had offered to grant, you know, property for easement should they be needed, and so, you know, that's something we've been looking at, and water and sewer along Route 9 corridor has been, you know, a wish for the town for a very long time. And, you know, one of the things that we have been looking at is with the infrastructure funding that's floating in the ether-
That's, that's why-
Is, is one of, you know, one of the projects that we are looking at, and we put that on our wish, wish list, and like I said, water probably, well, both, I mean, it depends on, you know, which, which businesses, but water and sewer are both, you know, very-
It's definitely, it's definitely important to the town.
Absolutely.
It's definitely, and it's something that, you know, that I've, I've said over and over again, that's, you know, to get water and sewer down that main corridor, you know, well, you know, for, you know, for businesses as well as, you know, all the neighboring neighbors in that area.
Well, you're solving an existing problem, and you are providing economic opportunity for tax ratables on a beautiful corridor, so it strikes me as something that I can certainly understand why that's a priority on so many different levels. And, you know, obviously, if you're ballparking it and you're thinking about it, excuse me, have any applications been made to try to get a piece of that law justice?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
So, we, we have been in the, in the process of doing that, and one of the things is that the Fleetwood Sewer Plant, which is a little bit further down Osborne Hill Road, is a self-contained plant, which DEC has been increasing the, the, or I should say decreasing the permissible affluent level, so at some point in time, we're going to be looking, we will need to either replace the plant or phase it out and take the, take the sewage, the sanitary sewage from that and pump it someplace else, we're looking, the town had done a study back in the ninety, late nineties, this was part of what was called Phase 3B, which would be to take that to Tri-Muni. So, there's been some plans that have been done, you know, in the past, but it was cost prohibitive at that time, and, you know, with infrastructure funding perhaps available, it, you know, it may become a better option, and, you know, provided that, you know, grant funding is there, and, you know, so the question is, as you know, the delicate balance between number of users and cost, so that's where we are right now. I mean, we've got the Fleetwood issue to address, and then if we pump it to Tri-Muni, there will be other users along the way, so, and that route will kind of depend, you know, the routing options will then determine the number of users.
Well, as I've said before, Carmax is fair and equitable.
Sure.
They're, they're willing to contribute to it, and obviously, we don't need it on our side, so we're not exacerbating any of the conditions because we have such low flows, but nevertheless, you know, we're, we're willing to be part of that solution, so.
Good.
So, if I may just respectfully request, I think that at this point, you've circulated for lead agency status, can we-
Close that doors. We've circulated, I believe that was done back in-
In May.
In May, correct, so we've gone through the thirty day waiting period, and we haven't received anything from anybody, at least I don't remember seeing anything, so I guess it's the board's intent to be lead agency on this project.
Yes.
So, I guess we can declare at this point lead agency status for the project to move forward a little bit more.
Would you like me to make comments on assignment for the first vote being voted?
You can do that, I mean, the signage, yeah, I mean, we, I mean, basically just going to vote on the lead agency status, you know, at this point.
Correct.
So, we just need to, just to vote on that. Does anybody make a motion to-
Sold.
For it to become lead agency, motion to pay a second, all in favor? Close opposed, non, so motion carries, so that's, I guess we probably should have some discussion regarding signage.
We can keep it, we can keep it free, I think most, for the most part, they're acceptable. I don't see any issue with A1, which is the monument sign out by the road, I don't know who's responsible for signs over there. We've got the AGI sign pictures. A1 looks good, B1 and B2 both look good, L is not really considered a sign, you'd get a temporary permit to hang that for the first month, you wouldn't, you know, you should hang up a banner, it would be a permanent sign.
Okay.
C, we don't typically consider as signage, but also we typically see that as much smaller, I don't know if it needs to be that size or not, it could be smaller, that'd be great, but we don't consider it signage, right, we wouldn't need to request a variance. B3 would be an extra sign though, beyond what you are permitted, so you can be, yeah, a variance for that would abandon that sign.
Do you have a copy of the signature?
Okay. That was B3 you were referring to?
Yeah, it's, it's on the section of wall we were just discussing.
Yeah, okay. And you're saying that would be considered an extra sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
Brigs up the concrete wall.
That it does.
We'd rather see architecture.
Is that what you had in mind?
And so, you said to, in order to obtain that, that would require-
You have to go to the DDA, you have to get a variance.
We can discuss that with the client. So, that, that B3 is, is really the primary concern?
Uh, B3 is the concern, C, we don't consider signage, although we typically see that doesn't have a, in a smaller font, I don't know if that's a-
Yeah, that's the prototypical size, we can, again, that's something we can discuss-
It's bigger than the business signs, right? It's lit and it's big, L, you would, it's the building department.
Yeah, we would allow a banner for thirty days, but not to put up a permanent sign that says open.
Yeah, that would, and I guess that would also, if that was a permanent sign, that would also be an extra sign, I'm assuming that that's a banner, the now open banner.
The, the, for you, for you, L, to be, oh.
The now open, yeah.
I see, yes, that would be a temporary.
Yeah.
That would be temporary.
So, it wouldn't be part of the sign package, you'd just get a permanent, right?
Yeah.
Makes sense. Okay, and that's signage.
Just tailing back to the, the service, that's basically, it's just a pass through, right? That area, just a pass through to get to the back.
But the only people driving through that are employees, right, that's not a customer pulled in, that's-
Pull-in, you should get an area between customers and employees, so if you're, if you bought a car there and you're inside finishing up the paperwork and then you're ready to go, they'll have it for you in that area. They call it hesitation lane for that reason.
Kind of like delivering the car to the customer, doing a walk-around audit.
Yeah, yeah, if you're bringing your car back to get an oil change, you could pull it into there, hop out, give them the keys, and then it'll bring it back.
Okay, so I mean, so the ser, I mean, the, the size of the sign, it says service, doesn't really need to be as big as it, it's not that important, it's kind of like, you know, pull up and, pull up in front of the door and, you know, we're gonna, you know, you're gonna get right in or something, yeah, you're still gonna have to talk to somebody before they want you to pull up to the door, correct?
Well, I think the idea is, and that's the, the reason for the signage, is to let folks know that, that is, that is where they need to go to, to, if they are bringing their car back for an oil change, they can pull it right in there and then talk to an employee who will bring it back, so it's really kind of a wayfinding directional signage type thing.
It's still about twice as big as Carmax.
No, it's bigger than the Carmax sign.
It's bigger and it's-
Yeah, I'm just saying, there's the importance of the sign, it's not like we're looking for, you know, half a block away, you know, if we're in the parking lot, you know, it's like, oh, okay, you know, it's right there, so it doesn't, it's not like it needs to be broadcast.
Understand what you're saying.
Okay.
All right, anybody else want to make a statement?
No, it's not.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, and thank you for declaring lead agency.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Ashcroft and Longbarty Lot Line Realignment.
Good evening, I'm Ashcroft, I was looking to just move our lot line from, I have and I had the land survey come in, present these, I'm sorry, it looked right toward.
Okay, I think, let's ask the one question, so what is the reason behind the exchange of the property?
We've always taken care of the property, and it's been understood between us and the neighbors that we were using it, but now that they're elderly, when they go to sell the property, we want to make sure that, you know, we actually get the property. This is always understood between us that the sale, nobody, if somebody new buys it, they may tell you for- Excuse me? If somebody new buys it, they may tell you for- Right, and it, and it covers the back of our property, so we just went the straight line for it.
Okay. I mean, it's really, it's not a discussion-
No, it's really, what other questions would you have?
Yeah, we pretty much already looked at it. Yeah, it's really, it's pretty, I mean, the application is pretty straightforward. Okay, so, it's really because of the, because of the simplicity of this, this transaction, normally is usually a requirement for a public hearing, but I believe that we're, we'll entertain a motion, I guess, to waive that public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, all in favor? Okay, any opposed? So, that motion carries, so we don't need to have a public hearing for this, it's, you know, it really only affects yourself and your neighbor, so it's pretty straightforward. But I, we do need a couple of things, I believe, before we can finalize, or at least sign a resolution, right, they would need some information, I guess they need two draft deeds, I guess?
There would be one draft deed.
Just one, okay.
Because this one is going to have, the larger lot is going to be conveying a strip of property to you, which is a point oh seven one acres, so we would need a meets and bounds description of that, which would be the deed from, now is the, so there's a, the neighbor has a trust right now, is that-
Yes.
So, we're the trustee of the trust, and would they, do you have an attorney who's involved in preparing those, or?
No, because we, we know them, so I mean, if I need to get an attorney, I can.
Yeah, so I would suggest that, you know, somebody, you know, get an attorney to prepare the deeds, and then the survey is going to prepare the legal meets and bounds description.
Okay.
So, and if you have, you know, B can give you my contact information, but, you know, that, again, that'll be just a condition.
A condition, yeah.
Sign in the plaque, so it's not really, you know, it's pretty straightforward, I, somewhere I've got, I think, was Kowalski the last one we did, Barbara?
No, we've done a few since.
Okay.
But they did have two.
Yeah.
There's the one.
So, it's, I mean, it's just, like I said, it's, it's a deed, and then once it gets recorded, it'll take a while for the county to adjust the map, but, and then adjust your tax bill, but it's probably not going to change anything.
Okay.
Engineering wise, we had no-
No, I mean, they answered the question, you know, we had asked the same thing, why, you know, but that, you know, I have a similar situation in my home, so totally understood, and our second comment can just be struck, because I didn't realize that the lot line realignment application is now live. The previous application, they had to fill out a full subdivision application and ask for a waiver to show contours, but since that application is live, I don't think they need to go through that process.
Yeah, there's no, no work that's going to actually take place.
Yeah, and then our, our last comment was just, I, I think you guys talked about it before the meeting, you know, some of the fence lines crossing, I don't think there's really anything the board can do about that.
Maybe that's just something between neighbors.
Yeah.
Over the years, you put up fences.
Yeah, just so you're aware of it. Okay, and the planner had no-
All right, we've discussed the, the increase in size, still below minimum, no variance required there, it's tactical action, no secret actions required, so, yeah, I think if it's, you would like, you can authorize me to prepare the resolution.
That's going to be the next thing here, so, you know, seeing that there's really no items that, you know, that need to be addressed at least by the board, is this more important, entertain a motion-
I'll make the motion to-
Planner, prepare a resolution.
Prepare a resolution.
Okay. Okay, so the motion made, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries.
Okay, so who would I submit the new deed to?
So, what happens is, from this point going forward, so we're going to go ahead and have the planner draft up a resolution for approval, so you'll have to, somewhere, I'll come back for, you know, for another meeting.
Okay.
I believe that'll be ready for the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Which, right, which would be, I believe, the eighteenth. So, we'll, at that point, we can vote on it, you know, on the approval. Within that, there will be the conditions that, you know, the attorney just discussed that have to get addressed in order to get, you know, the final approval.
Okay, so would you like that before the eighteenth, before the meeting?
If possible.
If possible, yes, but it doesn't need to be, correct?
No, okay.
It would take longer than that, no worries.
Yeah.
I have an attorney who's a friend, it's like, okay, do this for me.
I was just looking at the, this is a lot on Rockingham Section 2, and then looking at it, Miss Longbarty's lot, looks like it's probably the smallest lot on the whole subdivision plaque.
That makes sense. I mean, it is below the minimum, and everything else seems to be slightly above.
So, now it's, maybe a little bit bigger. It's, it's still way down there, so.
It's a water source, I don't know, right?
Yeah.
There, so, so at that point, I don't know if you have any other- So at that point, I don't know if you have any other questions.
Do you know if there's any... So you have water in municipal water and sewer?
Yes.
And do you know where the... There's no water sewer lines in that?
Nope, they're all in the front.
Right, okay.
That I haven't flushed, I know they're in the front.
Yeah, we didn't see any easements or anything.
Yeah, no, there's nothing on the plaque.
Yeah. So we'll see, we'll see you on the 18th.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Our next item this evening is a special use permit for Mid-Hudson Islamic Association Solar.
Hey, Sam Wilo again. Got the signed stamp plans and permission to operate letter submitted.
Yes.
Which was what was requested at the last meeting. Overall design and plans have not changed, though.
Right, so we have, there was the update. There was... There was a letter from both the planner and engineer on this, correct?
My letter says...
Your letter was minimal, right? I did print them, I forgot to bring them with me, so...
Okay.
I know the engineer had some stuff, but I think a lot of that was just conditional.
Yeah, they're minor comments. For whatever reason, when, I don't know who prepared the response letter, but they just skipped a few of our comments, so... They're pretty straightforward. We just need someone to respond to them, and they can be conditioned and approval.
They could be conditioned and approval, okay.
How do I get a copy of that letter? I received one before the last meeting. Oh, you did? Okay. I saw the first one, I didn't see a second.
The engineer sent this out, I think, late last week. And I believe the planner sent out the other day.
Okay.
So I mean, you have the showstoppers there.
Okay, great.
Those will be... And obviously, just the, I believe, fire prevention bureau was looking for just signage, to make them aware on the outside of the building of those disconnects and electric meters that, you know, there is solar coming from a different, you know, a different building.
Mm-hmm. Yep, we detailed that in the plans, I believe.
Okay, yeah, I did see there was something.
The fifth page generally is all of our signage laid out.
So as long as that's in there, I mean, that's suffice I believe they're concerned.
Is that in the, is that in the code now? Is it in the 2020 code?
They have to put signage...
Does it specify exactly, like, what...
Most of the time, very...
It does.
It's usually, it's specifying, it's very minimal, though.
Okay.
It's not... Doesn't jump out at you, but if it's on, you know, if it's at that location and they can see, you know, by the meter and by the disconnect, you know, they know that it's coming from the other building and not this one.
Yeah, I guess this is a...
Gives them a little more awareness of what's going on.
So, which raises, just an internal issue, not for you. How do we track this internally for grid file purposes, since it's two... For the grid file purposes, because it's two lots?
Well, right now, I'll just put a copy to both.
Okay.
We'll let the market's fire company get the information on the CLOs issue, and then eventually combine the lots, so they will be in another grid and then get merged.
Okay. Because that's, I didn't want that issue...
To create another issue.
No, well, I didn't want, you know, I didn't want to get lost in the shuffle, you know, in essence, have it in one file and then...
So a lot of times what we'll do in this case, the actual, say, resolution would go into probably the bigger file, which is the lot, and then it would be put down, it would look to the other grid, and in that grid, we'll put something that says, look for the information on the resume, and eventually, in this case, it will get merged.
Yeah, because there's gonna have to be two permits, right?
Correct.
One for each lot.
Right. So each one will fall out, then it's part one of two, or two of two for the both lots.
Okay. So with the merger, that doesn't need to be included in the resolution?
No, it's not happening yet, so it doesn't happen, but we're still allowing it since it's the whole on the Z amount that we're dealing with together.
Right. Okay. All right. So at this point, I mean, if everything's been satisfied, entertain a motion, have the planner...
Make that motion.
Draft the resolution.
Yeah.
So a motion is made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. So we'll have the planner draft the resolution, and that'll be sent to you prior to the next meeting, and then we will vote on it at that moment.
Okay. And then after that, that's when I'll apply for the building permits.
After that, and you've satisfied the conditions within the resolution, I'll be able to sign the final, you know, the final plans, give you approval to go ahead, and then you can go get a building permit after that.
Okay, great.
That's probably what you're looking to do.
I'll talk to you about what plans you need.
Yeah.
How many copies you want.
I guess.
Yeah, you should definitely be in point of contact after next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So I guess just for the record, we should probably put on the record that we're waiving a public hearing.
We did that last meeting.
Okay. All right. Is that on the record?
Yeah, we were discussing that earlier, so... Okay, so I think everything's all set then. Anybody else has any other questions or concerns?
No.
Okay. So say nothing.
All right.
See you at the next meeting.
See you in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Okay. All right. So our next item, it's a... Our next item is Myers Corner Solar Fund. We want to do a presentation. Hi, good evening. I believe the presentation tonight is the same one that you gave the town board not too long ago?
It's 90% the same.
No improvement.
Huh?
Not even improved. There are always some monthly changes. Some of the digital rhetoric has changed a little bit. Got some new imagery, videos. But essentially the same.
Don't forget the group version.
Okay, I've got a solution here.
So the... I might have to, because I'm looking for a draft resolution. I'm looking at the town board. That's...
All right, we're good. Sorry, fair with me here?
Calling an audible.
We'll miss, yeah, calling an audible here. We'll miss out on the videos, what is happening.
We'll take the crib break in.
All right.
Here we go.
Okay, so yeah, this will be a little bit different in P F R, but I think for all intents and purposes, you guys are gonna learn about it in a little days. Feel free to stop at any point in time, ask me any questions. My name's Sam Bailey, represent Lightstar Enterprises. Our application name is Solar Fund 2001. Both have the development credit. So provide a quick introduction to Lightstar and the team that we work with on agriwill takes projects. Go over what is agriwill takes, what does the research say, where is it going, what's applicable to the water, power project. Specifically, it's really suitable at the 489 Myers Corner project. Also, just for a little additional context, I think you guys are all aware of this, but we've been in front of the town board a number of times now. And they've asked us to give this same presentation to you, and they're on the same page.
Can you bring that microphone over in front of you, so they can...
Yeah.
Certainly. Is that gonna do the job?
Yeah, yeah, I was just saying, we weren't able, I wasn't picking up on the...
All right. So, yeah, once again, my name's Sam Bailey. I'd be the development manager on the Agriwill Takes project that's in question here. Work closely with my friend and colleague, Ian Ward. I'll let him introduce himself.
Hello. Ian Ward, Solar Environmental Services, Solag. USDA NRCS Conservation Planner, farmer myself. So work as liaison with the farm, between the farmers and Lightstar to come up with a good plan.
We also work with a larger team to figure out what the best approach is on a given project in a given market. Lucy Bullock Seeger is our head of policy at Lightstar. John Capello is our local land use attorney. And then another agriwill takes consultant of ours, Brian Comanek. He's the owner operator of the largest agriwill takes project in the country. So just quickly, a little bit of Lightstar's approach to agriwill takes, solar. First and foremost, you know, we're engaged in something that's relatively new to the United States. So the best approach there is going to be to engage with the entire stakeholder community. So, you know, it's working with NRCS, it's working with the academic institutions that are studying this, Cornell, Rutgers, and figuring out what the best pathway forward is for agriwill takes projects in the U.S. It's also imperative that we work with the local communities that we intend on on delivering agriwill takes projects to, and having their input from the very beginning, and working with farms and farmers to figure out best practices, you know, early on. And then ultimately to find the right places to put these projects, you know, sustainable siting, where it's going to benefit as many people as possible. I'll turn it over to Ian here to kind of give you guys a little agriwill takes 101.
So, yeah, what, well, what is agriwill takes? I mean, we're gonna ask that up, we've talked about it a couple of times here, but it is simply growing crops underneath solar panels. That's all it is. Raising panels up, spreading them out, and then allowing for the use of tractors implements, you know, the width between the panels is enough. You get a tractor right down, you got an offset PTO powered implement that can go under the panel itself. So that's what agriwill takes is. Some of the things that we're talking about are, it's really a land preservation technique as an alternative to development of some other sort. If we can put solar over the farmland without cutting down trees, we put it over the farmland while still farming, then you're not losing anything. So it's kind of, it's why the USDA and Department of Energy are quite excited. They're putting resources behind this nationwide. So we just happen to be on the cutting edge of actually figuring out how to do it in a practical manner, working with farmers to do so. So why, why here? In Massachusetts, there's a SMART program. It was the first in the nation to incentivize dual use or agriwill takes. And so there's things that we're learning from that. Raising panels up, spreading them out. What's the diffuse light coming down to the crops? How much sunlight do crops need? So that's where Cornell and Rutgers and UMass and American Farming Trust, they're all studying this. University of Arizona, Colorado State University. And so hardy stones are where, what's it, temperature growing degree days? Right, if you're, if you're got a farming background, agricultural background, that's one of the things you look at. The Waupageur area fits right in with where Massachusetts is at and where places outside of here are at. So just from a growing perspective, things are gonna grow. That's the first question that people ask. Will stuff grow underneath these? And unequivocally, yes. Now, the question is, how much is going to grow? And in what way? Do you put it directly on a panel, sort of in the middle? How, depending upon what crop you're growing and how you're growing it, that will be dictated. That's soil specific, that's farmer specific. So that's the level of detail that we get into when we're planning these projects. Just to make examples, and we had a video, you won't see that, just to show this, as Sam alluded to, on the right-hand side, Jack's Solar Gardens Byron has phenomenal production this past year. It's the first commercially viable solar project that's dual use. So people said, yeah, what's gonna grow? That's what's growing, vegetables of all sorts. On the left there, that's a hay field that was a planter that was working in and around the array. This was just, if anyone saw the article last week in the New York Times, this is a project in Grafton, Massachusetts, where people say, well, geez, can you get a tractor and implements underneath? And proof positive, yes, you can, with harrows. We're trying to move towards, and that's an aerial shot, again, New York Times, of a tractor, which is not a small tractor, moving in between arrays. We're looking at trying to do things in a regenerative fashion. That's where NRCS comes in, American Farming Trust, which is basically permanent cover, sequestering carbon. The first couple of years, you've got to work the soil to prepare it, and then you try to move towards regenerative agriculture.
So, thanks Ian. You know, how could this work in Waupageur Falls? To go, to touch a little bit more on this dual use, this multi-benefit, on one side, this is a community solar project. So that local distributed generation solar project is going to deliver clean energy to the grid, provide grid resiliency to the local community in a time where we're having more and more trouble with grid resiliency, and we're having a harder time with energy independence. On top of that, a community solar project provides bill credits at savings to local residents and businesses. So residences and small businesses in the area will be able to subscribe to this project and get energy bill savings over the course of the year for the next 25 years. So you have this energy component, and then at the same time, the... So you have this, this energy component, and then at the same time, the Thompson family, who we're working hand in hand with on this project, Sean and Brian Thompson, are going to do what they do best, and that's to farm fruit and vegetables and sell that locally grown produce to the local customers, to the local population. So you have this, this multi-benefit carved out of the same piece of earth. And, you know, to us, that's, that's a real no-brainer, because we have this issue in the state of New York, and really across many parts of the country, where the development of renewable energy and the preservation of farmland have been at odds, they've been mutually exclusive. But this solution says that that's not true, that we can, in fact, have both things. So at 189 Myers Corners Road, the Thompson family has been farming this parcel for years now. They're traditionally dairy farmers, so they've used this parcel to grow hay for cow feed, but the Thompsons have, have farmed everything from hay to tomatoes. They're an innovative bunch, and in looking to diversify their farm, they've partnered with Lightstar to go about developing an agricultural takes project. So we've been working with the Thompsons for many months now, and our most recent farm plan that we've put together with them is to do two acres of blueberries, two acres of strawberries, and six acres of either tomatoes or summer squash. And, you know, it's exciting when you start to put together the farm plan portion, think about, you know, what, what real produce is going to come from this. So why, why this particular site? There's four main things that make an agricultural takes project possible. You know, kind of the initial thing is, is there grid access? Can we, can we put that energy on the grid and get that energy to the local consumer? In this case, the answer is yes. We went through an impact study with Central Hudson, and got favorable results, and we're going to be able to do that in a viable way. Does the land meet our, our standard conditions tests? You know, are there excessive wetlands? Are there species concerns? Is there flood hazard area, et cetera? And the answer is no. So we checked that box. Is the, is the land going to be suitable for this type of farming? The Thompsons did some soil testing a couple of years ago, and the soil here is, is very promising. It's going to work perfectly for the crops that we're, we're planting to plant here. And then the last piece, and I would argue the most important piece, is having the right farmer, because this is, in fact, new farming practice. It's not easy to, you know, to change your practice that's been working for the last hundred years and to put a solar array on top of that and learn how to navigate around that, learn how to work with new and changing conditions. And the Thompsons are those people. They're eager, they're innovative, they're curious, and, you know, they're just been a perfect partner to work with on this. So, you know, collectively, we've got all the right ingredients here, and that's hard to come by. So it's certainly promising. These are some renderings. If you, if you guys saw the presentation that we had previously given, we had these renderings that I wasn't that satisfied with. I think these do a much better job of showing you guys exactly what this project's going to look like. What you're seeing here is ultimately the, the array type is a single-axis tracking array. So you're seeing it at stowed noon position, you know, the sun's directly overhead, but these panels track east to west, you know, as the sun moves along, along its arc. And that creates both opportunity and challenge in terms of farming around the array. Luckily, these panels have manual override, so when we say, oh, we want to plant at 6:00 AM on this day, we can ensure that those panels are going to be in optimal position to get equipment and farmers in and around the array in the most effective way. And then also, you'll see here, this is something that we're pretty keen on, is using farm fencing as opposed to chain link. This is a farm, and you think aesthetically, it's a lot more attractive. But you can see here, you know, we've got a standard John Deere tractor that's about six feet wide, moving down this, this row, and, you know, there's adequate space to do so. This is just another shot of kind of giving you an idea of what that, what the array is going to look like from a different angle, what the access gate looks like when you're using farm posts, and a little bit of an example of the type of vegetation that we would, we would screen with. So when we originally were evaluating this opportunity, you know, one of the first hurdles, so to speak, is that this project's in the R40 zone, and reading the code word for word, a solar project is not a prohibited use in the R40 zone. So we went to the town board and said, you know, this is, this is our predicament. We talked through different solutions, and it was kind of a collective, really, you know, their suggestion, collective agreement, that the best pathway would be to rezone the parcel to the R80 zone, which the parcel abuts to the north, and is actually a much more suitable zone for the parcel, this parcel's, I think it's about 32 acres. Those parcels in the R40 zone are two acres. And so, so yeah, we've come to, to that tentative agreement with, with the town board, working through that zone change process right now. They declared lead agency, submitted to Dutchess County for a 239 review, and we're going about our New York DEC, New York shipboat, US Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps of Engineers, affirmative work, you know, all to be in compliance with New York State Secret. This also just gives you guys an idea of where that parcel is.
The yellow is the parcel, but red is the area that you would be using for the agricultural takes?
No, the, I'm sorry, this is perhaps a little bit misleading. The, the yellow, the yellow is denoting the parcel, and the red diamond is, just to, just to tell you again, that's the parcel we're talking about.
I guess the question that I have, that the board had, mostly had to do with visual impact, and so my question is, how far off of Myers Corner is the solar farm supposed to be?
We'll certainly follow the town setback requirements. I forget off the top of my head what they are. We haven't gone into designing a site plan at this point, but, you know, certainly our intention to follow the setback requirements, and if there's any concerns about there not being adequate screening. There is pretty good natural screening on the majority of the site, but where there's not, you know, we'll put together a landscaping plan.
Well, we get to, you know, obviously, once you make the application, your first hurdle is to get the, the town board to do, you know, provide you with the zoning, you know, proper zoning, so we can take action on the application. It doesn't make sense to submit an application for something that you just can't do on a property. But, you know, just with the minimal, you know, we did look at earlier, we did discuss the, you know, screening, you know, visual aspect from distances, and it's not, you know, there are other solar farms around that, you know, have been built. One of the, by the airport in particular, so, you know, you kind of drive by it, and all you see is a, you know, is a sea of solar panels. Obviously, this is not going to be as, as dense, because you're going to have one, I guess they're going to put some spacing in between in order to get, you know, light down to the plants.
Yeah, there's, there's the, the ground coverage ratio is what it's called, is, is lower, because, you know, you've got to provide adequate spacing for planting.
So just, one more question, I guess, is, you're saying that a lot, there's a lot of the, a lot of different organizations are looking at this, basically doing, still doing research on it. You mentioned Corlal Cooperative Extension. How many of these projects have been built recently that you know of? You know, let's say within the region, you know, is there anywhere that any of these have been constructed and they've been in operation for, you know, more than five or 10 years at this point?
Not in the state of New York. And this is something that the United States generally is kind of late to the game on. It's something that's been very successful in Germany, it's been very successful in Japan over the last 20 years. And the United States, I mean, we've always had the luxury of this being a really big country. We haven't had that, that challenge of land preservation and renewable energy coming up against each other, but we're finding that that's an issue. So, so we're a little bit behind, and there aren't a ton of active agricultural takes projects that are, you know, five, 10 years mature. The most mature project in the country is in Colorado, and we work closely with, with the owner, that's Byron Comanek. It's called Jack's Solar Gardens. You guys should Google it sometime, it's very cool. We actually have a video here, and it shows, it's a drone that flies through down this row. You get a really good sense of, of what that looks like in practice. I will, I'll send you guys a...
If you, if you could send us any information you have, you'll forward it to our secretary, and then she can forward that to us.
Certainly.
You can just go. He's not a part of your company necessarily, he's more of like a collaborator, a advisor?
Yeah, he's a consultant of ours, yeah.
I think it's the best use I've seen with a solar farm ever, because it's a dual purpose.
How high are those things going to be?
It looks like they're, it looked like they're like seven, eight feet off the ground, the stuff I was looking at.
Yeah, that's correct. It's about seven, seven and a half feet.
That's not unreasonable for a dual purpose like this.
Three mounted solar panels?
No, it's not.
It's just a little bit taller, it's just not tall.
You know, it's this new, I think Wapger should accept this as a showpiece, because I think this is something that all communities should consider.
It's, I mean, states in, in New England, or in the Northeast, are starting to move, move on this. As Ian mentioned, the state of Massachusetts put in a state program to, to make this happen, because it kind of has to. And, and as we get further and further along, and it's not just like conceptual anymore, and we're seeing this really work in practice, we're seeing more and more interest at a political level to, to make this happen, to support this. Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's exciting. There's no other way to put it.
Well, I'd like to see more of them around. I think that they're perfect for what we need.
As long as you don't see it from the road. I don't want to see it from the road.
You don't mind looking at the one at the airport?
I mind looking at that, but I wasn't here, I'm explaining what would have happened. You guys...
No, we didn't, we weren't part of that.
We weren't part of that.
Yeah.
I'm like, I would have made them put something on.
Right, that was the, that was the county. The county built that on their property, they didn't need it for...
I don't mind it, but I don't want to see it.
Right, yeah. But that falls back to the...
Most of the area of that lot is set back considerably. I'm not sure what the use of, of the area by the road will be, but we'll have that conversation with site plan.
It'd be easy enough to do screening at Myers Corner.
No, but yeah, and the bulk of the lot is set back, and the bulk of the lot...
Yeah, I know, exactly.
That's a good lot for this project. It's a good, good lot for this project.
Yeah, and...
Can you put it in tomorrow?
If you, if you could, could you bring up the screen showing the parcel?
Yep.
No, I don't think so.
Could you zoom in a little? There's a, kind of an island, this is what we call a land hook. So the portion of the property goes across the street.
Right here.
Yeah.
And there's a, there's a little triangle there. It's currently, you know, farmland, but one of the things that we had talked about, it's, you know, adjacent to other residential structures, and we talked to, you know, the owners of the property that, you know, if they were, if they're contemplating, you know, potentially subdividing that off, it is currently, you know, subdivided by the road, for tax parcel purposes.
But it's a...
It's considered one lot.
It's, right, it's connected.
So, you know, if they wanted to, you know, carve that out, and I believe it would be... I don't know, you know, I think that lot actually would fit in the R40. What's that?
It's not a big lot.
Yeah. Right, so, you know, that's, that was one of the, one of the things that, you know, we had suggested, but I mean, if they want to continue it in farmland use, they could certainly do that, so.
Yeah, I mean, the concept, I mean, seems to be, everybody seems to be good with the concept.
So to, to the height issue, the current standard in the code is that the height of the solar collector at any amount shall not exceed 15 feet above the ground.
Fifteen feet?
Right.
So, yeah, so that would come into the question with it being, you know, articulating around with the sun, does at any point would that exceed 15 feet?
The current dimensions that we're using are 14.7. It's under 15 feet.
It's under 15.
Correct, at, at its highest tilt.
Okay. So that wouldn't really become an issue then. And just, you know, we're not looking at a layout on a project, so it's, you know, we're not to that point.
Right.
Cool. Yeah, the concept of it is.
Well, this idea would have saved a lot of farms throughout the state than just making them all solar panels.
Well, the other thing's from a farming use, one of the things that farmers like to have is a steady stream of income.
Right. Provides, right, it provides, it provides that income, but, you know, again, it's the, it's the combination of the reduced, you know, the reduced crops, you know, the reduced amount of crops, and the income coming from the solar, is that enough to keep everything going?
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's why I was asking a question about longevity of some of these farms, is you have somebody that eventually, that's, they have a go at it, they do it for five years, like, you know, heck, I'm still behind, you know, I'm still underwater, why should I keep, you know, why should I keep doing the agricultural resource there? I could just leave it, and it becomes just a solar farm.
Yeah, so we, we provide a stipend for, for the farm to, to be farmed. One, because we know that it's, it's harder to do this type of farming. And if we can take some of the, some of the profitability of the project, in part of the economic... some of the, some of the profitability of the project, and part of the economic benefit of the project, and pass that through to the farmer, not just in the form of rent payments, but also in the form of a stipend, so that, so that this all makes sense, that, so that the farmer can make ends meet, and also, so, you know, there's no, you know, a lot of farmers today are not farming on their own property, so they're paying rent for the parcel, they've got increasing farm costs, increasing labor costs, and it's a tough business, I mean, you guys all know this, but if we can provide a consistent and predictable revenue stream, both through annual lease payments and an annual stipend, that gives these farmers a real shot.
All right. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
In fact. Yes, good.
Now, I guess the only question was, would they, you know, was the planning board on the lead agency?
I believe so.
So, I guess the one thing would be for the planning board to consent to the town board, certainly as lead agency.
For the town, well, the town board?
For the secret review, yes.
Town board to be lead agency. Right, so, I mean, we have no, we have no objection to that. Through the zoning change, so, we need to vote on that, or?
Yeah, just, I mean, yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, motion's made, second, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Town board is, you know, we have no objection of the lead agency for the project.
What else you said in the referral?
I guess we...
That's okay.
They do need a referral?
Yes. Positive or negative referral? You like it or you don't?
Okay, so we'll make consensus, everybody likes the project?
Go ahead.
Or the concept of the project?
Yeah, so, I mean, the only action that, basically, that the town board is taking is re-zoning the property from R-40 to R-8.
Correct, it's just a...
And then it'll come back in front of us anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
It's not going to come back to you for secret, but it will come back to you for...
So basically, we just need to authorize the secretary to provide a memo to the town board saying that the planning board is, has a favorable recommendation towards the zoning change for this, this particular property. Does somebody want to make a motion to have the secretary do it?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Motion made, second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. So, we'll transmit something over to the town board, and we'll be along with their process.
Sounds good. Well, we'll be working on a site plan, and we'll be in touch, and look forward to seeing you guys again soon.
Yep, so we'll see you again, I guess, in the future, and see what you have to present to us.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks so much, everyone.
Okay.
Okay, so, being that we're at the agenda, end of the agenda for this evening, is there any other business we need to discuss?
No.
Okay, so, seeing there's none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We're done.
Thank you, Lynn.
Yeah, go ahead, run out the door now.